Good evening. Before we begin, let me just read a statement here that Jim Hall has asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. He's been in and out of the hospital and is having some tests done on his lungs this week, and he's had a couple bouts with pneumonia earlier. He wasn't at our last meeting, so a little update on Jim, and we, of course, wish him well. On the other hand, Matt Mayor, he is over a scheduled conflict. And if any of us that have worked, we know how that goes, and we wish him well, too. So we'll have a couple of absences tonight. But with that said, I wanted to fill you in on certainly Mr. Howland, let you know about Councilmember Howland, or Hall.
I'm not that cool.
With that, I would call a meeting to order and ask that you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the clerk to read their roll call, please.
Councilmember Elton?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Hall is absent, Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hedges.
Here. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda. Oh.
We have to excuse the absentee. I move that we excuse both Jim and Nat from this evening's meeting.
In a second.
They've moved in second to excuse the absences. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, the additions, corrections, changes.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
In a second.
They've moved in second to approve the agenda and as it has been submitted. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? And then approval of minutes, we got a regular meeting back on September 8th, that was the Tuesday, following Labor Day. The minutes are in our packet for our review. Any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented?
It seems like forever ago. I move that we go ahead and adopt the proceedings of the minutes from September 8th as presented.
In a second.
They've moved in second to adopt the minutes as presented of the September 8th meeting? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any votes? Good. Okay. Moving on to the approval of the accounts payable in the packet also. Any questions or concerns?
We have to pay our tax bills. That's an ouch.
For a while.
Yeah. If there's a large sum, it's because of the Kent County Treasurer, and we have to pay the school district and the Grand Rapids community. But with that, I would like to move that we go ahead and approve the accounts payable as presented.
In a second.
Thank you, and for this, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall is absent, Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is the citizen comments for items that do not appear in the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council meeting tonight, this will be the time to do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, our old business reports. Mr. How.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. A couple of updates on strategic goals. Street asset management plan, we completed a five-year street plan that's been adopted due to the actual last meeting. We're starting the process already of updating that and thinking of following our schedules so that as we get into the budget season, then we'll be hooking in a new five-year street plan for the period from '16 through '20. Then downtown trail connector, there met recently with the city's Parks and Recreation Commission to outline the results of its study and preferred trail well, so that project is moving along. And then on the downtown tower removal, as I reported to you last meeting, we expect the tower will be removed today. It hasn't been removed today, and I'm told the reason for that is because the crane company that Sinkwave had to come today to remove the tower decided that it was going out of business last week. So Sinkwave is now looking at getting another crane company in, and we have extended a date in October now for the tower to be removed. So that's where we stand on that now. Keep you updated, and that's all I have on those two reports. You have any answer, any questions?
Every day I keep driving by thinking, okay, I don't want to miss it because it's just part of the landscape, you know? Without the lights, it's not as noticeable, but can't do anything about it if the company goes out of business. Yeah.
Much appreciated.
Okay. Thanks for that update.
Anything else? Okay, moving on then to new business, cell tower ordinance.
You have in front of you a, and the ordinance has been recommended by the planning commission. You'll recall, and this ordinance would make modifications to the cell tower portion of this own ordinance. You'll recall that the planning commission recommended this to you for adoption at your June 15 meeting. It was between the planning commission recommendation and your actual meeting in June 15 that I went back to the planning commission because I sensed that there were still some policy issues that maybe needed to discuss, and so you just took no action. I think we took it off your agenda for that meeting. We went back to the planning commission. They had some opportunity through the rest of the summer to address some of those policy issues. They made some modifications, and that is what was before you, is that modified version. We tried in your packets to give you basically every iteration of it from the beginning until what we have before you. The other thing that you did during that time was, we had recommended that you adopt a moratorium on replacement of cell towers until the planning commission had an opportunity to complete its work and put this ordinance before you. You adopted the moratorium on August 17. I had initially thought that the resolution adopting this ordinance was set up to lift the moratorium, but actually it was not drafted that way. This is an ordinance, it's not a resolution, and so we're recommending that you adopt this ordinance, ordinance 15-06. And then assuming you do that, and after then you do that, we would ask that you have a second motion, and I passed out a recommended motion to the council members for that, to lift the moratorium on cell towers adopted by the whole city council on August 17, effective with the effective date of ordinance 15-06. And the reason we say the effective date is because recall there's a 10-day holding period for any ordinance that you adopt, that if members of the public disagree with that ordinance, and they want to initiate a referendum on that ordinance, and they've got a period of time to be able to do that. So there's that 10-day waiting period, and that's why the motion is drafted the way that it is. So first step would be consideration and adoption of the ordinance, and the second step would be the motion to lift the moratorium. Do you have any answer, any questions again?
Looks like that it's pretty thorough. I think that going back to the planning commission and getting a few questions answered, seems like we've covered all our bases as best we can. So I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 15-06, the cell tower ordinance.
In a second.
Thank you. They've moved in second to adopt a cell tower ordinance 15-06. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? All roll call? Yes, it is. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall is absent, and Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. And the lifting of the moratorium?
I'd like to make a motion that we lift the moratorium and cell towers effective to the date of our ordinance 15-06.
Just was gonna see what Jim was gonna do, but I'll second that.
Well, thank you. My commutation. I'm retired. They've moved in second, so afford to lift the moratorium as presented here, so perhaps a roll call on us.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall is absent, Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. Item B, utility easement agreement with First Baptist Church.
Lowell Light and Power is requesting approval of a utility easement agreement with First Baptist Church of Lowell, a resolution to approve that easement is attached to the packet.
That was at the Lowell Light and Power Board meeting. They went over, and I think we've got some, we don't have a map, but.
Six of us.
Thank you. Yes, so sketches it out, and it was a nice discussion, but nonetheless recommending to the council that we go ahead and approve this.
I move that we adopt resolution 15-15, utility easement agreement with First Baptist Church of Lowell.
In a second.
Thank you. They've moved in second to adapt this easement, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Elton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall is absent, Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. And that passes, so item eight is our monthly reports, which are in our packet. Quite a few things to look through. Any questions or concerns with our departments, and all the good things are going. Seeing none, then we'll move on to council comments, item nine, and Jeff, I'll put you up first.
Okay. As everyone knows, we had a fly-in yesterday at the airport, and it was quite successful. The weather was perfect. There was 49 planes on show. Some of them didn't fly in, but at least they were out for everyone to see, but there were some pretty awesome airplanes out there. And then, as we did that pancake thing, after we got done, I, we had to take the stuff back to the fire department and youth fair, and I walked from the youth fair to the fire department, and I walked up the new driveway that we had sealed and coated and help protect it. And I missed a couple spots. Just like to let you know. It used to be, I think the driveway part was supposed to have been up to the one with the parking lot. It was sealed.
Coming up from Bowls Road?
No, from the fairgrounds of the.
Broadway.
From Broadway.
From Broadway, I'm sorry.
Yeah. They sealed it all the way down, but they didn't crack seal it all the way down, so.
One point, Tim.
Yeah. I just wanted to.
They were paying for parking lots.
Yeah. And the only reason I see it is because I walked. I just thought I'd let you know that. We did have a Parks and Rec meeting that Mark told you about, and I did go to the fire board meeting last Monday, and they, you know, talked about sealing the parking lot and talked about how it was sort of an emergency to get it done because, you know, it'll make it last longer. We wanted to spend as much, so the Parks Board decided that we should probably do the same thing because we have some parks at parking lots in the parks, so we made the recommendation, recommendation of Mark to write a grant for us to see if we could get some money to seal and crack seal and pay the part of Creekside Park. And we did get the, to see the routes that they were going to take for the trail, and it was actually a pretty good idea. I don't know if Art's going to put it up on the board tonight or not, let everybody see it, but it was a pretty good thing that they showed. Anyways, but that's okay, we'll see it in the future, but it does bring it down through the fairgrounds, under the bridge, so. And I guess that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Sure. The Arbor Board did not meet. We're waiting to meet next month, hoping we'll get results of maybe some grant requests to see if we have any money to plant some new trees. The LCTV Board has not met, and Historic District Commission meets tomorrow night. I did want to make a comment that I attended an event at Senior Neighbors in Schneider Manor for Meet the Candidates for City Council. I was not allowed to speak, but I did listen, and I did hear the senior citizens were a little concerned about feeling left out of the loop, being able to get the three minutes. Not all of them are into YouTube and have that capability of getting the minutes, or other than reading them on the website. And so I would like to recommend that we take occasional coffees to the council and have it at their facilities. Some of them are unable to get out, but too much, but would like to still meet with us, and I think that would be a great idea if we could do that, so. Could we take our coffee to the council with the senior neighbors to invite them, make it a little easier for them to attend?
All right. Thank you.
Good segue, because I did have a chance to talk with Tara there at Senior Neighbors, and she would be willing to host and have her coffee with council for our November 7th meeting, so she can do that for us. So we'll make that announcement over the next couple of council meetings, but yes, that'll be out in two, November, or October, I think it's the fourth, I think I could be wrong, the October coffee with council will still be at the Chamber of Powers office from 8:00 to 10:00 as usual, so we'll make the change in November, so. I guess I'll just continue then with my comments, because there were many. I had the privilege to attend Friday. We passed the resolution back in August to recognize Friday, September 18, 2015, as POW MIA Day, and I attended the ceremony at the Veterans Home and represented our community. There were several others that were there and read proclamations, and it was quite a nice ceremony and time to reflect on the prisoners of war as well as missing connection through the various wars. There's a nice brochure here about that, but it was truly an honor. My wife and I both attended it. It was quite special. If Mr. Hall were here, he would be reporting on the planning commission, that all kinds of good things happened at their last meeting. They also discussed, besides the cell tower ordinance, South Monroe parking lot, there was some information and approval administratively towards doing some of that work, community facilities. Mr. How gave a report that he had given to us, to the planning commission, so they could be up to date on the various community facilities, library, museum, and parks and so forth, as well as the five-year street plan, which we looked at in our last meeting, so that the parks, the planning commission is up to date on that, as well as the North Washington Street work, we're talking about. And also that, I guess that was most of what was covered there, so. In my list of meetings, we also, oh, the planning commission is also having a joint planning commission meetings with the Virgins and Lowell Townships coming up next Monday, September 28, 7:00 p.m., and that meeting will be called the Virgins Township Hall, so looking forward to getting the various planning commissions together so that they know what the other communities are doing, and everybody's working together within our community. Lowell Light and Power, that a week or so ago, and as we saw, they made a recommendation from the Baptist Church for that easement. The MMEA Fall Conference will be held at the Crown Plaza coming up October 7, 8, and 9, and the CEO of APPA, Sue Kelly, will be the keynote speaker. She'll be giving an overview of the coming challenges within the electric industry, as well as Valerie Brader from the Governor Snyder's office will be talking about the progress update on new energy legislation as it faces Michigan and the things that need to be done. The biodigester continues to improve in progress. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but a lot of work has been done. Work continues on the installation of the natural gas-fired Rolls Royce turbine, and the project has started with the Fallon Accord, moving forward to analysis of various operations towards natural gas supplies, and with the possible, maybe in the future, light power being a supplier of natural gas for our community, so they're looking into that. It might be a little ways out, but it looks most interesting, and they're investigating that as a possibility. Lowell Light and Power is in communication with Lowell Arts, getting a mural on the back of the line check, so good news there. That's progress. Color, since it is, is apparently a good primer, base coat for something, anyway. Well, we'll see where that goes, but Lowell Light and Power, Sharon is working with Art Lowell Arts with what might be done there. As well as a community solar program, we're interested in moving ahead and expanding a project with the high school on community solar. The size of the project may be in the neighborhood of 1.5 to 2 megawatts. This could have implications for long-term power, supply needs, and revenue within our community, so there's all kinds of things going on. Lowell Light and Power's been very busy. After the meeting, the board went over to St. Mary's School to tour the building there as a possible relocation of the offices, but that's still in exploratory stages. And just for our information, billing, last month was, had six extra days in the billing cycle, so if your bill seemed a little extra high with air conditioning and everything else, there were six extra days of billing cycle. We had quite a discussion about billing cycles and how that happens and why it happens, and it happens. And then last week also, we had Justin Amash visiting our community and did a town hall for probably about 65 people that were in here prior to the planning commission meeting, so that was very good to hear Justin talking about things that are happening in Washington, DC. So I imagine there's a few things that will carry over. I'm finished, and we'll carry over to Mark for the manager's report.
Thank you. We had an opportunity to work with a contractor on that one that did North Grove High Streets project to improve North Washington, improve Fremont to the city limits. What they would do is crush and shape the asphalt and try to maybe crush the asphalt The reason that this was an opportunity is because the machine that actually does this, crushes the asphalt and puts it back down on the ground, puts it back down on the surface, is the machine that's going to be in town for the North Grove and High Street project. We had a very short window to be able to make a decision to basically issue a change order for that contract. We got a price of $7,700 to do that, and so we turned around fairly quickly, a letter to the residents that live up there, most of whom are non-city residents, but we wanted to get everybody's input into that idea. We hand-delivered, I think it was 27 letters, and got quite a bit of input, several emails, a few phone calls, and the end result was really kind of 50/50. There were people that said, yeah, at least it's an improvement over the potholes on top of the pothole patching, and some folks said, well, you know, I would really rather it be paved, and it really should be a priority. As you know, it's not part of the five-year street plan right now. And then there were some other concerns that were raised as well, and so we made the decision to move forward. It's going to be done next week. North Grove High Streets are, that project will begin next Monday, and so this Washington piece of it will be done as well next week. In the meantime, I put together a memo. I sent it to you. I also emailed it to everybody who provided input by email. If you switch over to number four, please, Sue. And anybody who wants a copy of that, it's certainly available, just call your office. But the memo gives you the background that I just gave you, and then we went through each one of the concerns that were brought up, like loose gravel could be seen as a permanent solution, and there are delay in future plans to be paved. Seems like it was done with one-one contract in a single bid. Material will not have enough time to bond, which I'm going to come back to. Free spa cycle will cause larger potholes for the issues related to maintenance, snow piles. Is $40,000 effort to pave ever economically feasible? Somebody asked that question. And drainage north of Fremont would be a concern. Couple things that I just wanted to specifically address is, one was the material would not have enough time to bond, and that's absolutely true. Asphalt millings, usually you want to do them in the spring, so you've got some time throughout the summer with the summer heat to allow them to bond, but one thing that's being done with a fair level of success is, this machine also has a tank on it, and you can put brine in the tank and then mix brine with the millings at the same time that you put them down, and that will help the bonding process for a, well, any time, but it certainly will help for this fall application. And so we're planning on doing that. We, as I talked with the street maintenance folks, as far as maintenance, there really was a feeling that maintenance of this surface is really going to be a lot easier than maintenance of the multiple potholes that we had on that street. Plowing is something that we're going to watch. In fact, we've talked with Kent County, and we tend to go up that road all the way to the end of it and turn around anyway, and so we'll just continue to do that and follow that shortest section of it for Kent County. We can decrease the down pressure on the plow blades. We can always go to, we can also go to slower speed, which will help to keep any of that material from being thrown to the side. And we also talked about pushing the snow in one direction, maybe toward the cemetery direction, other than intending yards and stuff up there, so that if there is some cleanup that has to occur in the spring, then we will be doing that on the cemetery side. And drainage, there's an issue with drainage when spring comes down, and just north of Fremont, there's some drainage issues there, and we've looked at that. We cleaned out the culvert that was already there. Ron's continuing to look at it, and, you know, it's a concern either way, drainage in that area, but we're going to see if we can figure out if there's something else we can do before we put the material down, but we'll continue to monitor and continue to keep an eye on it. You know, ultimately, it's an improvement. It's a step in the right direction. It's not, you know, the final surface. When we would pave it, I don't know. I know it's not going to be in the next five years. Could it be in the next 10 years, perhaps? It is a, it is a street, a portion of the street that serves the cemetery, it serves the Boy Scout cabin, so we talked about our criteria in streets that serve public facilities. It certainly needs that. Streets that serve businesses, well, doesn't really need that. It's not really a sort of a major connector to a highway, so it fits some criteria, but not all, and there are some other priorities right now. But it's an improvement. It's a step in the right direction, and we felt that it was the right decision to make, so. Do you have any answer, any questions, if you've received any feedback, or any answer to any questions that you have on that? Otherwise, we also have, I've been reporting to you that we have the parking lot completed off of South Monroe. We put the sign up in coming spring 2016, expand the pink parking with a picture of the proposed parking lot. We also had some of these laminated, excuse me, and pass them out to the businesses on that block to be able to put in their windows, so. But folks know that parking that lot, that's not a permanent solution either, but it'll go through the winter, and we're planning on that paved parking in the spring. Excuse me. The one time I didn't grab a glass of water. The DDA provided input on a written process that we're developing for processing redevelopment of liquor licenses. We're continuing to work on that process. I'll have a draft before you. It's really an administrative process, but I want to provide total transparency and allow for public input on that, and certainly allow for your input on it as well. And we'll get that draft to you in, I guess, in. get that draft to you and get some input. And thank you, Mayor.
Just so much suffering I can say to you.
Good bowl of water. We also had an opportunity to review the pavement marking plans prepared by MDA for the M21 project next year. We've been working with them to implement the downtown place-making plan recommendations by painting the proposed bump outs, but also adding parking from Monroe Street East quite a ways, which what will happen is that the lanes will narrow. That was a part of the recommendations. This is going to, the idea is that it will slow traffic down. The lanes and the parking will still be within MDA standards, but they will be down to the narrowest of standards. And I think it's important that people know that, that as that pavement is marked and as that is painted, then we're really going to need to slow traffic down. And we're going to have to watch as they're using those parking spots. So it will be narrower and I want folks to know that now. And if there are concerns, I'd like to hear about those concerns now or later. It's kind of hard to know until you actually see it. But, you know, that's what we're recommending to MDA, that they follow through with this place-making plan and paint those lanes in accordance with that plan. Work began today on Washington Jefferson Jackson Streets and as I said, September 28th on the North Grove High Streets project. We've provided some notice to the businesses and the residents around the area. The milling is done. Milling was done in a single day and the crews have started on some of the sewer work that needs to be done. The water work will begin this week. And there are going to be some crunches and this project is going to take several weeks because of all the utility work that is going on there. But we'll have some nice new utility lines. We'll have some issues that are taken care of in that area and we'll have some new pavement in that area as well when all is done. That is all I have. If you have any questions.
In your discussions with MDA as far as the downtown and painting and so forth, I think that also will include crosswalk and fiber grill across the other parking lot.
Yes, mid-block crossing. Yes, yes.
Well, that will also be wonderful for our downtown. That should also help, you know, readdress slowing traffic down.
Yes, yes.
That'll help greatly. Make our J-Walkers leak holes. Anything else?
Actually, the last thing that I did have for you was a picture that was shared with me and I'll let Chief Buco cover this. If you can see it. This is the new Harley-Davidson that was put on the road today, as of today. And our cost for this was nothing, other than the rest of what we could up and smoke and everything. But Chief, go ahead and drop on Harley.
This is part of the federal government, 1033 surplus program with surplus equipment that the federal government isn't no longer going to be using. This was part of the Pentagon Motorcade Police Unit that was disbanded earlier this year. One of two bikes that we received. I'm a little bit partial to Harley-Davidson, so that's the one I got worked on first. Equipment graphics today and we put it in service today. Michigan State Police was actually up at Grant Raceway today conducting their annual motor vehicle testing. And I talked to a couple of their driving instructors that I know personally and they took a look at it and they said it's in very good shape for a 2006 Harley-Davidson. So it's a very, very good bike. And one of the things that I wanted to do when I took over as chief was to bring back the motor unit. We had that up until about 2005 when the Harley-Davidson lease began to be not so cost efficient. And then they eventually disbanded their $300 a year lease. So it was a good opportunity for us to bring back the motor unit to Lowell.
Who will be, who have trained officers on that unit? Or I've never seen them because it's been gone for a while.
Detective Lauren is actually going to be coming out of the detective bureau next year and rotating back to the road. And he's indicated that he would like to go through the motor officer training. So he will be the one that will be the primary officer. And I'm the secondary whenever I'm on the system.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. And all of our boards and commissions are full. So there are no appointments with that.
Isn't that nice? I move that we adjourn at 7:36.
You want a second?
Do you want to go?
I'll make the second. Been moved and seconded to jurors. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.